Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the work session business meeting that we began half an hour ago. We had an executive session for the purpose of the discussion of three matters of the employment history of three particular persons. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let me see. The treasurer's report for January 2022 is available in the business office. I would like to open up the meeting for the public to speak on any of the listed agenda items. Is there anybody that... Okay, then I'd like to start with the consent agenda.
We resolve to approve the consent agenda items two through 12 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second? Questions or comments? Mrs. Bellino, please.
We are approving tonight the minutes of the last board meeting. We're approving athletic team mergers with Lakeland that include the boys swim team, girls gymnastics, boys hockey, both varsity and modified. We're also approving a team merger with Maipac, and that's for the girls swim team. We're approving additions to the 21-22 sublisting. We're approving some additional hours for staff members. We're approving faculty members to provide translation services and homebound instruction as necessary. We're approving an agreement with Tyler Technologies. We're amending our retirement date. We're approving unpaid days for a staff member. We're approving CSE/CPSE placements, and we're also approving the 2022-23 project of services with Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Presentations.
Ooh. That's you. We're talking about the budget.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening, we are going to do our second run-through of the school district's proposed budget for the 22-23 school year. This one will be an abbreviated version, although we'll go through each of the slides. We'll certainly do them more quickly. But if there's any questions, we can certainly go back to any one slide at the end of the presentation. So as we begin, we always use our district goals as our foundation for our work. This year, we set the three goals to be reflect, learn, and thrive. So reflect on the struggles we've all experienced, find some lessons we learned along the way, and really focus on our ability to thrive moving forward. There's many factors that we consider as we develop our budget, and this slide outlines some of the many varying variables that must be considered in order to create a balanced budget with enhanced student programs and opportunities at the center of all of our School, really, you've been striving this year to maintain a great deal of financial transparency, and we've held several Q&amp;A sessions related to budget development. In fact, the most recent one just prior to this meeting. And it's been a great opportunity to have community members come out. Some community members that we often see at board meetings, and some community members we may have never met before in person. But just really providing an opportunity for individuals to come out and ask questions, us provide answers, and really with the ultimate goal of making sure that the community has timely, accurate information that they need to make an informed decision when it's time to vote on the school budget. This slide covers our enrollment over the last couple of years. I know there's been some questions out in the community, so I'm going to pause on this slide for a couple of minutes and just explain what are really the two main variables that we look at when we're looking at the district's enrollment. The first is the number of graduating students versus the number of incoming kindergarteners. And that's obviously the most predictable indicator within our school budget. So for this school year, we will be graduating 156 seniors. We anticipate those 156 seniors will be replaced by 111, right? There's asterisks there because we're not exactly sure what our kindergarten enrollment will be yet for next school year. But we certainly anticipate an incoming class that is smaller than the most recent outgoing class. So that obviously results in a net decrease in students from the 21-22 school year to the 22-23 school year. One thing that you'll notice is the 156 is really the last large class to leave the district, and that the numbers begin to balance out much more so moving forward. And I believe the average of every grade next year is about 120 students. Some grades are above, some grades are below. We have one outlier at 79 students. But ultimately, the district will start seeing less of an attrition rate from graduating seniors compared to incoming kindergarteners. The other variable that we look at is the number of students transferring out versus the number of students transferring in. Now, obviously, students transfer out across all 13 grade levels, and students transfer in, spread out across all 13 grade levels. So these students tend to not have as great of an impact on class sizes, right? When you spread out those students over 13 grades and five, six sections per grade, we're able to pretty effectively spread them out. But the number, the interesting point of that number is the number has been static for many years. If we gained 90 students, we typically lost 90 students. If we gained 60, we typically lost 60. And the outlier that certainly corresponds with the COVID pandemic is the district has seen many more students entering versus students transferring out. So I just wanted to take a minute to pause to explain what are really the two enrollment variables that the district uses. So there still is an overall net decrease in students, as outlined on this slide, but we are also seeing more students moving in than students moving out, and those are the two variables. This slide just highlights some of the many programs that we're either continuing to offer or new programs. The programs that have asterisks next to them are programs that are at least partially supported with federal stimulus funds. And we're proud to say that this budget not only represents the fiscal needs of the community, but also the programmatic needs of our students. So we're able to maintain the programs that we have, and the federal stimulus funds actually allow us to introduce and bring in some new ones. Most of those programs were based upon feedback we received through surveys to our faculty, staff, and community as to what type of programs they would like to see. So there's academic recovery programs, a reading recovery program. There are summer enrichment programs. There's parent engagement opportunities. There's many different ways in which we are trying to meet the needs that were identified in the surveys regarding how to best utilize the federal stimulus funds, which are ultimately earmarked to help students recover from lost instruction during the pandemic. This slide highlights our anticipated staffing changes. As we discussed, losing one of the... Our current fourth grade section has four, fourth grade class has four sections. We know that the incoming third grade also has four sections, but the incoming has five. So we need to increase our elementary school staff by one. So we have one position that's built into our general fund and something we anticipate covering moving forward. But then we also are looking to bring in two additional elementary school teaching positions to help lower class size. And those two positions will be funded through federal stimulus funds. The bullet down below will show that'll drop our class sizes, in some case, 25, 26 students, to 19 to 20 students, and that really gives our teachers a head start in helping address some of the academic deficiencies that students have experienced over the past several years. So we're really trying to maximize the opportunities for elementary school teachers to make the greatest impact on the students they serve and ultimately benefit our students. Now, when the federal stimulus funds run out, we have to be willing to make a decision whether those positions are ready to move or whether we have to really replace an expenditure within the general fund to essentially take something else out to make room for those positions. We're also looking to hire a special education teacher at the middle school. An ENL teacher has already been bought in this year. Our additional floating school nurse has already been bought in. Teaching assistants to provide teachers with additional support in their classrooms. And the Mandarin position is really a swap for what was a contracted position out through BOCES to an in-person teacher, and there's many benefits to us for that. We obviously have other contractual increases, increasing health costs, and other obligations that the district must meet. So this slide talks a little bit about how we go about building a capital project. An increase in state aid this year has provided us the opportunity to perform maintenance on our buildings that would have otherwise likely required us to go out to the community and ask for them to approve us bonding money. The most, the largest of those projects is a partial roof replacement here at the high school. We have a beautiful building, but this beautiful building is now a little bit over 20 years old. And as any of the students could point out, they could show you exactly where the roof leaks. So we had a contractor come in, do a full survey of our roof, and then break it up into priorities. So our highest priority work will be the first work to be done, and we're happy to be able to support that within our current general fund. We're also looking to do smaller projects, partially supported by the federal stimulus funds, and that includes the creation of new outdoor learning spaces, upgrades to our air filtration and water filtration, among other opportunities to improve our capital buildings. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Figueroa, our business official.
Okay. Good evening. Okay, so I'll start talking about our revenues, where we get the money from to support the budget, and this year... I'm sorry. Am I doing this right? It's getting rough with... Okay. So, yeah, so this year, we're looking at revenues from our state sources, specifically seeing quite an increase there. We have some replacement of foundation aid that the state's been holding back since they started the program in 2006, never really gave districts their foundation aid, and now coming through with some of that. So we are seeing a 3% increase over what we've been getting from the prior year. And so our state aid, general aid, is about 24 or 25%, almost 25% of our budget. We have 2% coming from other types of miscellaneous items, earnings on investments, refunds from other vendors, and then use of our debt service reserve to pay for the roof project, which is $1 million, coming from there. We have 2.7% of our revenues coming in from restricted and unrestricted reserves, and that is helping to balance our budget. And then, of course, the local share is the 70% coming through school taxes. So here's what it breaks down to in the way of dollars. The 24.8% or the state aid that we are getting is $13.8 million. The local revenue sources, that includes the money for the roof, is the 1.5. The appropriated fund balance and use of our reserves at 1.1 million. And then the tax levy based on the cap formula at 1.49% increase is 39.3 million, and that tax cap actually was 1.62 after we calculated it. And it looks like we, you know, we could do, we could support the budget with the 39.3, so we're at 1.49. Total overall budget is $55.8 million. The appropriations that that revenue is supporting is our general support area of the budget, which includes administration, operations and maintenance, our insurance costs for, not health, but this would be like district liability insurance, property insurance like that, 4.9 million. Our instruction portion of the budget, which is the largest portion of the budget, $29.6 million. And our transportation portion of the budget, $3.3 million. That includes our outside vendor who supports our hybrid bus, you know, transportation system. And then we have our benefits and debt service, and our benefits would be, you know, health benefits, workers' comp, any kinds of, any kind of tax implications on payroll and salaries. And then the debt service is the amount of money that we use to pay all of our capital expenses that have been, you know, bonded through the years, $55.8 million budget. Again, this is another way that it breaks down and the percentage that those dollar amounts represent. And just to mention, about 68.5% of our budget does cover, it's mostly personnel costs, and our, you know, the next area of the budget, you know, included in that 68 is our, you know, the classroom instruction, all the benefits break down in this way. So I wanted to give you an idea of that. You can go back to that if you'd like. The three-part component budget, this is a representation of the state asked us to represent our budget this way, how much goes towards instruction, how much towards administration, and how much towards capital. And then our property, property tax cap calculation, which yields us the 1.49%, really, this determines the amount of school property taxes that a school district collects from its property owners. And again, it determines a threshold or the amount that we're allowed to raise, and we are putting up a budget that does not require a supermajority vote, and that means simply that we have to have a majority vote plus one, I think, to, that represents the winning, the determination of whether the budget passes or not. This again explains a little bit more about the tax cap. Again, 1.49% change in the tax levy is a savings actually to taxpayers. Then it could have gone up to 1.62. Again, the foundation aid has a lot to do with that, and the federal stimulus funds that are coming into the district being able to support certain things that we would not be able to afford otherwise. Just to give you an overview of the school tax rate calculation, and this is just an estimate at this point, but in September of 2020, this is the actual rate was $25.68 per $1,000 of your home's assessment. This current year, it was $24.72 per $1,000 of your home's assessment. And then in the upcoming year, it's looking to be an estimate of $25.11 per thousand. And this is based, I mean, purely on what assessables we have right now on the assessor's books. We don't know what those total assessments are, and we don't have an equalization rate yet. If the assessments all change equally in, you know, for homeowners across the board and the equalization rate gets applied, the taxes should be relatively, no change to them. And with the, with the slight 1.49% increase, on an average home, we're looking at about An average home in Putnam Valley is $353,000. This is a 10-year history of our tax rate, and you can see our tax rate is lower than it was nine years ago, and we can say that we're being fiscally responsible and trying to keep taxpayers in mind with every budget that we put up for proposal every year. Here's some of the items that are impacting this year's budget, and we have a number of retirements, which are contributing towards a savings of about $235,000. We also have a savings in the area of the nonteacher pension rates, and that's about $467,000. But we are also seeing increases in areas. So we have an additional general education teacher, an additional special education teacher. The pre-K program is totally funded by state aid, but it also has to become part of our appropriation. So although we see coming in an aid, we have to show it going out in appropriation. So it impacts the bottom line, but in both respects, for revenue and for expenses. Teacher pension rates have increased. We're seeing a big change there, $422,000. And the big item this year that we haven't had in the past couple of years, I mean, there's been increases of like 1.5%, 3% even, but this year, health insurance is going up 8%. It's costing our budget $416,000. I don't expect to see that go down in future years, and I'm repeating that because I want to impress upon everyone that that is something that we're going to keep seeing for the next couple of years, and it's going to have an impact on our budget. Tuitions at a district, about $250,000. We're going to see an increase there. And just other contractual changes from vendors, technology, BOCES costs, transportation and whatnot, about $100,000 overall. We have, it's time for us to, our lease is up in the administration building. So we are looking at purchasing that building. We can no longer, if we want to lease it, it's going to cost a lot more than what we're paying per month right now. Market value of leases and market value of the building itself has gone up, but the five-year lease period is over, and we have to lay out $368,000 to purchase that building in order to stay there. The roof work at the high school, again, is $1 million towards that in the budget, coming directly from reserves. The entire roof to replace it would be about $3.5 million, so we're going to do that in phases, and this is called phase one and two at this point, and we'll see where we go from here and when the rest of it has to be replaced. I don't see any debt coming off of our debt schedule until '27, '28. So that work, if we can hold off as long as we can, we will. We'll have to see how that goes. This is another way of looking at the budget from top to bottom. We have an increase in state aid of $2.2 million. Generally, that's been about, traditionally, it's been about $700,000. So with that money, we are able to support a lot of the items in the budget that we wouldn't normally be able to support. The tax levy change, again, 1.49%, close to $600,000. The reserves, we're using about $200,000 less than we did last year, and becoming less reliant on that, hopefully. And our budget-to-budget change overall is $2.6 million. This slide was explaining about how the federal aid came to us in two different lump sums. They're both grants. We had to apply for both of them. We haven't got, I shouldn't say it that way, we didn't get that money. That money doesn't come to us until after we spend it. So after we spend it, we file all kinds of paperwork that brings that money to us as long as those expenditures have been approved. Both of them have been approved. One of them has to be used in total by September of 2023, the other one by September of 2024. And again, some of the expenses in the budget were exchanged for capital expenditures so that we could get the aid on the capital expenditures in the budget at 67%. And then in the federal stimulus money, we swapped over some of our regular general operating expenses like salaries and so forth, which then next year, we will put back into the budget, so therefore not having a change on the bottom line. Okay. This just, again, explains the whole process about the stimulus that I, that I just reviewed. And then here is what we swapped between the two in order to make it work so that we could maximize our aid. And on the top in the green, you'll see federal stimulus funds that are being used towards classroom salaries, the floating nurse, the teaching assistants. On the bottom half in the black, you'll see what we're spending those capital expenses on in the budget, and then we will receive aid on those projects. And again, the items on top, if they can be added to the budget next year and swapped for these items on the bottom, that's what we will do, and there'll be no change to the bottom line. Here is the information on the school budget. It's going to be May 17th, Tuesday, May 17th, which is the third Tuesday in May, and it is running from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Putnam Valley Elementary School cafeteria. And if you have any questions regarding that or absentee ballots, Maureen Bellino, our district clerk, is available for that information, and I am available for any budget questions that you might have. Again, we've been holding Q&amp;A sessions. I don't know if we're having another, we don't have anything else scheduled right now, but if we see interest in that, we would certainly do that. Or if anybody has questions privately and would like to speak with me or Dr. Luft, we would be available for those conversations. Just quickly, contingency budget, need to go over what the ramifications are of that. A contingency budget means that the budget doesn't pass for some reason. The board has a decision to make at that time, whether they want to submit the same budget for a second vote, or submit a revised budget for a second vote, or adopt what they call a contingency budget. Contingency budgets are, to me, the, not really the ideal thing to do. You have to revert back to your prior year's tax levy. Therefore, it changes the ability to keep things in your budget that you need to keep in your budget. It's about $600,000, $578,000. So we would definitely need to make cuts to staff, possibly materials and supplies, possibly extracurricular activities, a combination of those things. We would have to charge the community for use of the buildings and grounds where we wouldn't have to otherwise. Any equipment over $5,000 would be prohibited from being purchased. Any capital projects would have to be eliminated unless they were for health, immediate health and safety reasons. And again, reverting to a prior year's tax levy would have a compounding effect on future budgets. We would, this year, if we had to do that, we're looking at a $1.2 million deficit in the budget next year and so forth going forward. I can, you know, if anyone likes, would like to go through that and understand that more, it is not something that I would expect everyone to just be able to understand. Quickly, we've had tax cap review in other years' budgets, but I would be more than happy to go through that with anybody. Right now, in the proposed tax levy on an average home, just to kind of give you what that impact would be, it's $138 at my estimation, and, which comes out to about 38 cents a day on an average home in Putnam Valley. And then we have our five best budget facts. I think these are very important in kind of summarizing what things we should make sure hit home with all of our taxpayers. And being, the first one being about our complacency in, in voting, and that's across the state. You know, every budget vote counts. You know, a simple majority vote is what we are putting up, and that means that we are looking for a vote to pass the budget under the tax cap. So if we, you know, I can't tell people how to vote, the board can't tell people how to vote, but I want people to understand that voting is important. We're seeing, out of all of our eligible voters, 9.1% of our eligible voters are coming out to vote. And even worse, 15% of our parents of school-aged children are coming out to vote. So it tells a little bit of a story, and I think Dr. Luft said it the best when he said that if he was seeing big numbers of voters coming out to vote and our budget was being voted down, we'd know that we need to do something, that we're not doing something right, and that we're, you know, we're getting a message, someone's sending a message. When we don't even have a turnout that really represents the number of folks that are in town that could be voting on the, the budget, it, it leaves us to believe that, you know, that no one's either paying attention or that they think everything's okay, except what's going to happen is the budget could fail at some point, and we would, it would be devastating to the, to programs and to staff. The 2022-23 budget includes a tax levy that's under the cap for the 10th consecutive year, which has helped obviously control the local tax burden. And despite the impacts of our inflation, which we're hearing around 7%, when we planned this budget, it was about 4, almost 5%. It's gone up since then. However, we are imposing a tax levy change of 1.49, which nowhere near represents what the rate of inflation is. So we are having to take money from the reserves to make up that difference, and we're doing that. And then, again, the proposed tax rate is under what it was nine years ago. And again, the budget helps to sustain the programs that we have in place, including our extracurricular activities, emotional wellness, and prioritizes capital expenditures without levying additional money from our taxpayers and community. Okay, and that would be the end of the presentation, but I can answer questions if you guys have questions?
Jill, just a couple comments. If, this was just abbreviated version that Jill provided and Dr. Luft provided. Last time, last, two weeks ago, March 24th, was the detailed, same presentation but more detail. So if you wanted to see that information, watch that video.
Right, it's on our website, the presentation in, you know, live streaming, it's recorded, it's basically the same slides. I did go into more of a detailed explanation as we were going through it for the first time. Also, the detailed budget is available on our website. That's a line-by-line budget of all of those numbers that I just went over. And it's about, I don't know how many thousand of lines it is, but it's a lot of lines of budget. And it's viewed on there, it's very small, I have copies in the back of the room for anybody who's here. But if you view it online, you can expand it, you can look at it in a much larger version.
Thank you. Voter registration dates?
So voter registration dates.
Voter registration is available any day in the district office up to May 12th, in the morning, 8:00 AM, till about 3:30 in the afternoon. It's also available at the high school, and it's also available at the elementary school. If someone needs to register and they can't get to me, they can just give me a call and I'll make sure that they can get registered. And you can also just download the form online, the New York State Voting Form, fill it out, mail it in, as long as the county has it by May 12th, you're good to go. And absentee applications will be available on the website, but I'm not allowed to put them up until April 18th. We're not allowed to accept anything until April 18th. So they will be available on the website after that date. And again, that's just an application. If you want an absentee ballot, you have to fill out the application, send it in to me, and then I will send you a ballot.
The budget newsletter is also going to be mailed out. We will be mailing that out within the specified dates. We're not, we're restricted to having it in homes until the, I think it has to be within six days of the budget vote. So we have a short window to get that out and get that information, make that information available to everyone in that format. And if the budget gets adopted tonight, I think we can move forward with getting, putting that newsletter together. So I think that was our aim, to get that, the budget adopted tonight. I don't know if it's still on the agenda for tonight?
It is.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
I might get some more clarification. The, first off, the pre-K, if we don't do it, we don't get it, correct? That's how that works?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Secondly, this is all about state aid stuff. The state aid now, we've seen an increase in the state aid, which is larger than we're used to seeing. The, you know, foundation aid's a big part of that. And then we have building aid, which is based on reimbursements or dollars on our capital, some of it on our capital. So like our project in the, for the, for the middle school and all those things, those are considered now complete, correct?
Correct.
And now we're, now we would be receiving annually forever, however, in 15, 20 years, whatever it is, that's part of that number, correct?
Correct.
So that's, that's only dollars that will come in while that project, the life of the remainder of the payout for that project.
Right, it's on an amortization schedule, and then we get a certain amount of aid for that over the next 15 to 30 years.
And then there was the reinstatement of foundation aid, which is being phased in still, as far as I understand it, correct? And it's not complete. The trend, however, once, I guess we get to the point where foundation aid is completely reinstated, I don't know when that will be, then there should be, in theory, a leveling off of those increases, correct?
Correct.
So we won't be able to count on that bump anymore because it'll be a smaller increase or be around the same depending on the district's circumstances, because every district is different in the percentage of aid that they get based on all kinds of different-
There's a formula, yep.
Right, and they have the wealth factor, et cetera, et cetera. Those are what I had on state aid.
Okay.
Oh, the other question I have, in our adoption resolution is for 58, $55,823,530. As a reminder, that is the entire budget, not the levy.
Correct. The tax levy is not the, is different than the budget. The tax levy is going up 1.49%, the budget-to-budget is 4.94%.
So, for clarification, is there, what shows up on the ballot itself, is that the levy or the budget?
The budget.
So just want to make clear. So when we're talking about $39 million, I think, $39 million, that's the levy, the $55 million that we are adopting is, including state aid and all the other revenue sources?
Correct. $39.3 million is the tax levy, the total budget is $55.8, that's the number you will see on the ballot, the 55.8.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yes.
And Jill, we're adopting today, there are other, I always forget what they're called, budget hearings, and other, we'll be meeting again and presenting the budget again at our next meeting, prior to the vote. What happens from now?
So we have one more meeting before the budget hearing?
Yes.
So there is another meeting after this on April-
19.
19, Tuesday, the 19th.
And we will, we can go through these facts again or answer questions again. But it's more or less, after it becomes adopted, it goes into print, I want to say. And then, becomes an adopted budget, not a proposed budget. So that would indicate that that's the budget that people would be voting on, on May 17th. Yes. Thank you.
So the adoption locks in the amount, not necessarily the details-
Okay.
-to get to that amount.
And I would, you know, I was hesitant with the timing because you didn't know what's going on the budget, but hearing this kind of a handshake agreement, I don't think we're going to see any major changes at all that, we wouldn't be able to weather in either direction.
Right, so that's a good point, I'm glad you brought it up. They did not settle state aid at the state level. We don't know the final state aid figures, except we don't expect that. Schools' aid will be changed. It's, there's a matter of other issues that have been brought up at the state level that they can't settle, there are differences on. I wanted to say, and again, like, the number that we're voting, the number that's becoming adopted in the ballot is 55.8 million, and that number is the total budget. If, for some reason, the budget needs to be moved around or, you know, repurposed in any way, that number can still remain the same.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
As always, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jill. Fabulous job, as always.
Okay, we are glad we have a student with us tonight. We missed you last meeting. Do you have a report for us?
As always, the Classus 2023 juniors have officially been accepted into the National Honor Society, and the ceremony will take place on May 4th. We've had a very successful National Honor Society bake sale with over $300 raised over the past five weeks for the pajama book program for children in underserved communities. The Spring Play in the Heights now has tickets coming out starting on April 18th. The dates where, when the play will be played are on Friday, April 29th at 7:00 PM, Saturday, April 30th at 7:00 PM, and Sunday, May 1st at 2:00 PM. Tickets for the senior prom are out at $70, with a price raise to $75 on April 22nd. It will take place on June 15th, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM at the Villa Bourgognees in Wapoogers Falls. The spring sports season has started, and I'd like to say we have been very successful so far. Our spring break will take place from April 11th to April 15th, and external exams for the IB program will start April 28th and go through May 20th. Thank you.
And I just want to add that Dominic is wearing his new school colors of Vinghamton Green.
Yay!
Thank you.
But we get to keep you in navy blue for two more months, so.
It's very fitting.
Thank you. Dr. Luft?
Sure, I got a quick one this evening. So no, last meeting, we had briefly spoken about the sneak peek I got at the elementary school musical, Willy Wonka, but they did have their evening performance, which I am sure was a fantastic experience for the parents. The cutest kids you've ever seen up there, especially the Loompa Loompas, my personal favorite. The IB students did their cast presentations, so many of us here on the board were able to watch. One of them happens to be sitting at the table, but I won't mention who. But again, it's very impressive to see the amount of work that these students are able to do, on top of the academic rigor that is upon them, but to find time to support creativity, activity, and service projects. And not like a single project, many, many projects that go into meeting that part of the IB diploma. Our high school hosted their college admissions evening. We recently had a DEI committee meeting, which was unfortunately not well-attended, but we did go through, one of the priorities was sort of offering teachers professional development opportunities, and we were able to go through sort of a, how would you handle the situation scenario with the members of the committee. So it was a great experience to provide feedback and to discuss whether or not this was sort of an appropriate thing to put before teachers, to help them build a webatar for dealing with challenging conversations. The PTA held a general meeting for budget discussion, so it was earlier this week, it was fairly well-attended. Myself and Ms. Figarella were there, along with some of the board members, to be able to answer questions from some of the PTA parents that arrived. They, and parents had an opportunity to submit questions to be answered in advance. Before this meeting, we held another budget information session. Our PTA has their elementary school book fair underway, and we recently completed the New York State ELA testing, with math upcoming right after the break. This evening, we have two students that are actually receiving awards, the Putnam County Youth Awards. The dinner is tonight, that's where Ms. Levine is right now. And they are recognizing two PVHS students, Adam Barty and Zach Kutroff. So congratulations to those two, receiving their awards this evening. We had, for the IB middle years program, we recently completed and reviewed an FAQ document with the entire staff, so that was where we were with that. And obviously, our budget meetings with many of the same highlights that Jill just provided, a 1.49% tax levy remaining below the tax cap, and are having a lower tax levy rate than we did nine years ago. And I can't emphasize enough our hope to improve voter turnout beyond the 9.1% of all registered voters and 15% of parents of school-aged children. And then we have some upcoming board meetings, our BOSI's meeting, so just note that our next board meeting is on April 19th, which is a Tuesday, and not our normal Thursday, but every school district in the state meets on the Tuesday to vote on the BOSI's budget. And then our final budget hearing and business meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, May 3rd, and we'll talk a little bit later about the upcoming presentations that'll be before the board. Thank you.
Gary.
Oh, I wrote that down right here in front of me, I didn't read it. We do have two more performances, so I had mentioned Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory at the elementary school. Our middle school students will be performing a high school musical, and as Dominic had mentioned, the high school students will be doing in the Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. I, just to add to Dr. Luft's mentioning of the PTA meeting the other night, the PTA has new officers, and they're really trying to do a good job, but they really are asking for parental support. I saw posted today, the middle school book fair, they, they're having a setup, and they need people to come in and work for a couple hours. So I'm just, you know, kind of as a personal ask, if parents are free and available, if they could find a way to reach out to the PTA and volunteer for a couple of hours, it would really be helpful. Otherwise, you know, your officers and board, and PTA, the few PTA people that are active, you know, burn out, so. Just kind of like an extra plug. Okay, new business. Three items of new business, so. Number one-
Resolved on, resolved by the Putnam Valley Board of Education to adopt a tentative budget for the 2022-23 school year, the amount of $55,823,530.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Elizabeth Scheck-Polarmo to a four-year probationary term as a mathematics teacher commencing on September 1st, 2022, and terminating on August 31st, 2026, in the tenure area of mathematics at the high school on Step 2 MA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Scheck-Polarmo holds mathematics 712 professional certification.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number three, please.
Whereas by letter day, on March 31st of 2022, Adamar Nader Arcasio, a tenured teacher in the district, submitted a letter notifying the district of her resignation with the purpose of retiring. And whereas, a district notified Ms. Nader Arcasio that it would be unable to accept her resignation for retirement purposes due to the absence of meeting certain condition precedents that must exist for any benefit, conferral, or recognition of retirement purposes. And whereas, upon information and behalf, and belief, Ms. Nader Arcasio has been advised and understands that the district is unable to recognize said letter of resignation for retirement purposes, Document Number 170 over 22, but will accept her resignation from the district as presented to the board at this meeting. Now, therefore, it must be resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Ms. Adamar Arcasio from her tenured teaching position effective close of business on April 29th of 2022.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Resolution passes. Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment on any topic.
Krista Straub. I have two children in the school district, I'm also the Moms for Liberty Chair.
Krista, just pull it down a little bit, do you want some help? Yeah, there you go.
Better? I come in peace tonight. I want to thank you all for the library situation with the books. You gave us parental consent like we asked for, and as a community, we had a discussion together, and it was peaceful. And in other places, it's really become a huge topic and a sense of contention, and neighbors are fighting, and here, that, that didn't happen, and you listened to us and gave us an option to pre-approve the kids' books, and I want to thank you for doing that. I think we're kind of ahead of other districts, you know? There's a lot of arguing going on with it, and we just put it in place and fixed that, so I want to thank you. I started this journey after my daughter's experience in the middle school. I started this chapter, and it was like a real, it was a really hard thing for me because I know a lot has happened in the past couple of years, and I'm not here to place blame on what happened. But when she went into the middle school, she was an honor student, she was an honor student for a couple of years, and something happened, it, you know, she wanted- And something happened. It, you know, she wanted to be a cop, and I don't feel that she was empowered there for what she wanted to do. I don't know, obviously, I'm not in the building, so I don't know what the discussions are. But I felt like she internalized that a little bit, and her grades slipped, and it really bothered me. Then I got the yearbook, right? The middle school yearbook. And there were two women in the yearbook. They were both Supreme Court justices, and both amazing, amazing women. But I didn't feel that they both had amazing stories written about them. And it really, really bothered me, as a mother of a daughter who was struggling. And I just want to remind everybody that we need to lift each other up. And, you know, I think us meeting, you know, and, and communicating what's going on, and you giving us the parental consent is doing that. And I want to thank you for all the cooperation, and thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Krista.
Okay, anybody else?
My name is Miranda Zaki-Gritz. I have an upcoming kindergartner and a seventh grader. And I just have a question. Has a parent with an enrolled student been a member of the board in Putnam?
In Putnam Valley? I'm sorry, ever? Ever. Do you have any know?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I just had my, my daughter, my second daughter just graduated last year, so I've been on the board for 10 years, with 70 years of them being in the school.
And my children were in the school when I was on the board before. They've since graduated from college and moved on to their careers, but they were students here at that time, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, and we're not the only two. There are, there were many.
And I was, I was elected while he was graduating. It was a choice of me to not run until he was out of the school, because I was afraid of a conflict of interest issue, and I only had one child, wasn't going to miss games for board meetings. So sometimes you just have to balance timing. I know we had a board member who was a grandparent in the school, as well as a parent in the school. He served both times. So, yes, it's absolutely, has occurred.
Okay, upcoming meeting topics.
So we have, we've invited BOSI's to come in and provide a presentation about their CTE course offerings. So that's something that we're looking to get on the schedule for June. I know that Ms. Levine is working with ENL teachers to prepare our presentation with them, so those will be scheduled either in May or June. Dr. Doherty is working with our clinical staff providers to provide SEL curricular presentations, so how that sort of second-step program really moves from the elementary school to the middle school, not so much in the high school. So the presentation will certainly focus on elementary and middle school, but how we're supporting social-emotional learning of students through that curriculum. And they'll be presenting, again, either in May or June. And then our last presentation that we're still working on is the Seal of Civic Readiness for this year. That's one that we discussed earlier in the year. Putnam Valley was asked to be a pilot school across New York State to participate in that program. So we're in the midst of it right now, so it's a little challenging to, we sort of have to get to the end of it in order to then be able to present about it. But that's something that we're hopeful to get done this year, and if not, certainly the first thing next year, after we complete the process. Like I said, the students are within the process right now, earning that Seal of Civic Readiness.
Board member comments?
So a couple offline conversations that have happened with the superintendent and just two board members, never more than two, that I took to explore options moving forward, with more of an, two things that comes in my mind that I remember, about an emphasis on skills training and on going into the trades as definitely a viable option, and probably the best option for a lot of, a lot of people. And so getting BOSI's to come and, again, share with us and with the community those opportunities, and then kind of are thinking about how we go about making that a bigger part of what we do, or including, being more inclusive in that way. And secondarily, we, I know we already have a senior elective for financial literacy. I think we should be looking kind of along the lines of how we have a requirement for community service for our high school students is to devise some sort of required financial literacy that I think is, would be very helpful. I know for sure, with one daughter just graduating from high school last year, and the other one two years before that, I fell down on the job on teaching them financial literacy, what a check is, all those lovely things, or how to put a stamp on an envelope, believe it or not. Point being, I think, I think we can think out of the box at how to do something like that, but I think we should figure out a way that that becomes a big core requirement for what we do before somebody graduates. For us to consider, at least.
Yeah, I think the BOSI's piece, I think, is important. Many don't realize we have over 50 students enrolled in that program each year. I think it's a tremendous program, and some of those students are, have job offers before they even graduate from that, from that, or many still go on and pursue higher education. So we're happy to facilitate a conversation emphasizing or highlighting some of the great work that's happening there and through that partnership. So I think that'd be a great opportunity for everyone, and we certainly encourage many to go that way. I've told my two boys on several occasions that they should open an electrical business.
Such a shortage.
That would help support them, but it's, I think it's a great trade and a great skill for them to have, so. So that's the first piece. And the second one, I've already started having conversations with the high school administration. I think every, not going to find anyone who disagrees with the importance of finding a way to instill financial literacy into our students before they graduate and sort of become independent and stop spending their parents' money, which I guess is a good part. But it's, we're, I mean, exploring many options or many ways in which to make that work within a very complex schedule for students. But we have some ideas, and the high school is very receptive, and we're going to explore, see how we can make that work.
Jerry, there's such an important point. As a parent of whose child graduated both high school and college, the number of pre-approved credit cards that came to my home for my son was frightening. If you did not have any kind of head on your shoulder, or a nagging mother, or any of the like, it is very easy to get into credit card debt. They make it so, so simple. So that's why it's important to have these conversations. And I'm not taking credit for my son. He went to a workshop. Tiki Barber, the former Giant, did, made it his mission, because he and some of his family members got into serious credit card debt, and he did a lot of work on that direction, so.
I think my first credit card I signed up for at a Mets game, because I was cold and I wanted the long-sleeved shirt.
Right.
I used it through college for the next five years, 28% interest or whatever was on the card, so.
That's a problem. Yeah.
That's okay.
Sharing the misery together.
And I know there are a lot of people experiencing spring breaks at different times from ours. I happen to be one of those, so I will not be at the next board meeting, because my school is off that week, and I'm visiting my mother out of town. So for those of you who have kids in two different school situations, I know it's not easy.
I think Helen and I are signed up to take the superintendent's evaluation workshop that's being offered by New York State School Boards Association. Just to put it in your head, we have to start thinking about that, you know, as the year kind of winds down. I'm also trying, with Maureen's help, to sign up for a school library conference, which, but I have to sign up through my learning plan, and it's...
I signed up for that. I signed up for it.
Okay, yeah, because it's really...
You have to create an account in, in learning, but it's like, I don't do that, but.
So anyway, that'll be the first challenge. So I'm looking forward to those. Okay, I can't think, Helen or Jeanette?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'd like a motion to adjourn the work session business meeting and move to an executive session for six matters of the employment history of six particular persons.
Sumut.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and good evening.
Safe vacation, whenever it is, for everyone.